To order at this time, and we're going to ask the Vice Chair, Board Member Gina Messenger, take charge of the comments. Is anybody signed up?
From what I see, there isn't anyone. I just double check in. Nope, okay. No takers.
Okay, good job. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is School-Based Health Center Presentation, and we have the lovely Elena Garcia to lead us through that. Thank you very much. Welcome. Good afternoon.
Thanks for having us. Are we gonna be able to go ahead and pull up the PowerPoint presentation? Oh, look at me. I had no idea I had so much control and... I can't see that far. Somebody's gonna need to help me. Sideshow. Awesome. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Well, once again, thank you for having us here to talk about school-based health centers. Our purpose here today is to talk about our journey that we've been on in regards to school-based health centers, and ultimately seeking approval to move forward with our next steps. To begin, I want to talk about exactly what a school-based health center is. And simply put, a school-based health center is a shared commitment between the academic community and the health community in providing medical services to the students or the children in our community at school, which is where they are. So where did we begin on this journey? Well, in 2017, a task force was established to investigate the possibility of opening a school-based health center in Manatee County. And the task force included a wide variety of representatives, many of whom are here in the room today, and I'm gonna go ahead and ask all of them to stand up, and then I'm gonna ask them to just individually introduce themselves and their role. So go ahead and stand up, guys, if you don't mind, and then we'll just start over here and work our way around.
Hi, I'm Emma Vitar, and I'm a junior at Lake Ranch High School.
Here I am, Legler. I originally chaired the first task force. And I'm representing now Healthy Teens Coalition of Manatee County.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Bray.
As you can see, we had quite a cross-representation of people on our task force, and we have put in, in fact, even way before I got involved with this task force, quite a few hours of time in researching and investigating and visiting to learn everything we could about a school-based health center. Needless to say, when you're talking about trying to work with a group across this many agencies, cross-agency collaboration was definitely required. There was a lot of coordinating of schedules to make things happen and to move to the next step. And I'm proud to say that I think we've come a long way in the last year. Some of the things that we've accomplished in the last year include deciding to contract with Laura Bray's organization, the National School-Based Health Alliance. They provided us with expertise in research, data collection and analysis, and guidance on the steps to opening a school-based health center. Needless to say, they seem like the natural choice because they've opened up school-based health centers all over the country. On the task force, also visited a school-based health centers in other school districts, and in a moment, I'll show you some pictures from those visits. A community health partner was also identified, MCR Health, formerly known as Manatee County Rural Health Services. In 2018, the Title IV grant became available, and one of the tenants, or one of the three pillars of the Title IV grant, is safe and healthy schools. And Superintendent Saunders quickly identified that piece of Title IV as being the way for the district to financially participate in a school-based health center. It was going so well, too. Okay, and there are some pictures, of course, on our visits. I believe both of those pictures are from Pinellas County. One is at Gibbs High School, and the other is at Boca Sierra. Really robust programs that they've had there for quite some time. So why do we need a school-based health center? Before I jump into that part, I just want to say a little caveat for a second. One thing that has always amazed me as we have progressed down this road with school-based health centers is how aligned everything within a school-based health center is with many of the other initiatives that we already have going on in our district. So for example, why do we need a school-based health center? Well, the research tells us, for starters, that there is definitely a decrease in absenteeism and tardiness when you have a school-based health center. Of course, this makes sense because if the doctor, so to speak, or the services are right there on campus, there would be no need for absences. There's an increase in attendance. There's an increase in GPA over time, and an increase in academic expectations, school engagement, and safety. Again, perfectly aligned with many of the things that not only we in this district but across the street are working on. But in addition to the academic, you know, reasons why or evidence why a school-based health center is needed, there's also medical evidence to support that this is a necessity. We know that having a school-based health center means that there's an increased use of a primary care. There is a decrease in inappropriate use of emergency room visits, and decrease in hospitalizations, and perhaps most importantly to us here in the school district, there's an increase to access for hard-to-reach populations, and that especially includes minorities and male minorities. Forty, I'll get it right sometime. Okay, so in 2013-14, there were over 2,000 school-based health centers in the United States, and they were in 49 of the 50 states. I'm sure that number has increased since then. In the state, there are currently 336 school-based health centers in Florida, and you can see the districts there that currently have school-based health centers. We have everything from the large school districts such as Miami-Dade and Hillsborough down to smaller ones such as Gadsden, although the majority of them are pretty big. But Gadsden is the exact opposite. So you can have them in big districts and small districts. So what exactly is gonna happen? What services are gonna be provided in a school-based health center? There's really threefold. One is primary medical care, the other is behavioral health, and the third is dental and vision. So the specific services that would be provided for primary care include well visits, including physicals and sports exams, interventions, laboratory tests, diagnosis and treatment for acute and chronic illnesses, prescriptions, minor urgent care, and mental health referrals. On the behavioral health side, and again, how much more aligned can we be, given everything that our state is facing and all of the recent legislation that has been passed in regards to what we need to do for students and families in regards to mental health? This clinic would provide behavioral health as well, and that would include screening, assessment, diagnosis, and treatment for common adolescent behavioral problems and conditions, brief interventions, and prescriptions and management of psychotropic medications. And then, of course, we also have dental and vision support. Our preliminary outline calls for having a dental van there once a week and a vision van there once a month, providing everything from dental sealants to eye exams and even diagnosis and treatment of eye diseases. So one big question that has arisen during this process is, well, what happens to the role of the school nurse? Would that disappear? There was a lot of confusion, so I thought, let's go ahead and explore that question for a second. So it's really important to know that the school nurse will maintain all of the current functions that they currently have under their umbrella. In fact, their role might even be a little bit expanded because now they're not alone. They are a member of a school-based health center team. One of the roles that they would play in being a part of the team is, of course, identifying students that might need the services of the school-based health center. Of course, they might also provide follow-up services. Once the child or the student has seen the doctor, then obviously sometimes follow-up care is needed. Sometimes they need to reach out to the parents, and sometimes they might act as a liaison between the clinic and the school staff, who they may already have relationships with. So ultimately, what we're really trying to say is that the school-based health center and the school nurse's office are really partners in the delivery of health care to the students at the school. Of course, none of this can happen without parental consent. So a huge part of the upstart in this endeavor is going to be the development of permission forms that we are gonna attempt to get all students to complete and fill out. And eventually, a parental consent policy will be developed, and you can see some of the items that will be on the consent form there on the slide. We'll talk about the services that'll be offered, HIPAA rules, billing, et cetera. Speaking of billing, a lot of people want to know, well, hmm, how will families pay for this? Well, the fact of the matter is, it's kind of a three-part deal. The first is, when we get the consent forms, we will ask for insurance information. If families have insurance, the insurance would be billed for the services that were provided. If it's determined that a family does not have insurance, then MCR Health would collect information to help them qualify for, to determine whether or not they'd be eligible for Medicaid. And then if they're not, they don't have insurance, and they don't qualify for Medicaid, then MCR Health has a sliding scale that families pay that's based on their family income and the size of their family. So what exactly is needed to open up a school-based health center? Well, from a physical plant perspective, we need a high school campus, and we need adequate space. And the space needs to include a registration area, a waiting room, private examination rooms with running water, a private counseling room, lab area, accessible restrooms, and storage. What personnel might be needed to run a school-based health center? Well, as you can see, we've kind of divvied that up. On the left-hand side, you'll see what the school district is gonna provide through the Title IV grant, and that's a coordinator, somebody to run this show, so to speak, and a school social worker who can help with community outreach and families and even some of the behavioral health. MCR Health will be providing pretty much all the rest: the nurse practitioner, the medical assistant, the receptionist, a licensed clinical social worker, and then, of course, along with the vans come the dental hygienist, a dentist, and optometrist or optician. So why did we pick Southeast High School? Well, first and foremost, when we spoke to high school principals, Ms. Faison was highly interested, and we all know that whenever you start an endeavor at a school, having an invested principal is the true key to its success. So thank you, Rosa, for agreeing to step up. The surrounding neighborhood has been identified as a musa, and for those of you who may have been like me a couple of weeks ago, don't know what a musa is, it stands for a medically underserved area, which means that there is limited or no access to health care. Also, Southeast High School has a space. The task force walked the school and identified some available space that might be easily transferable into the types of physical spaces that we described earlier as needing, you know, like the examination rooms and awaiting area, et cetera, et cetera. A survey was also done of the school staff, and everyone agreed how much a school-based health center is needed out there at Southeast High School to support the students. One last thing. I know a lot of you have been hearing about community partnership schools, and I wanted to take a moment to delineate the difference between what is a school, what is a community partnership school, and how does that differ from a school-based health center? Well, a community partnership school is a partnership between the school district, an actual school, and other community resources that deliver a variety of wraparound services: child development, community redevelopment, et cetera. The school-based health center would be in a community partnership school as well, only that would just be one piece of the several services that are offered there, where at Southeast, we're talking about solely having a school-based health clinic. So, in summary, the proposal for a school-based health center is this. The proposal is that we do it at Southeast High School, that we use MCR Health as the federal qualified health center. It took me a couple of weeks to get that one right. That we would hire a health coordinator and social worker with the Title IV grant, that MCR Health would hire the nurse practitioner, medical assistant/LPN, receptionist and social worker, and also bring the dental and vision van. And the proposed services would be primary care, behavioral health, dental, and vision. So that's it in summary. Does anybody have any questions that the task force might want to answer?
Where are we?
Question time.
Okay, Vice Chair Messenger?
I just had one question. It was a long time ago when we had the last presentation about this. So this might have been answered before. But there was one mention here about using the patient's existing insurance, and if they don't have insurance and they don't qualify for Medicaid, then they'll use the sliding scale and they'll be required to pay something. And my question really stems from when the parents give consent to go, is it a per visit or is it an overarching consent? And I ask that because if they say, yeah, they can use it, and then Suzie walks in there and does some other kinds of tests that might make the parents have to pay fifty bucks, and that fifty bucks they weren't anticipating, and they didn't know Suzie was gonna go in there that day and do that, or how do we make sure those types of things aren't happening?
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and defer to the folks who have done this multiple times in the past. Can you say it in front of the microphone? No, it's okay. So usually, the consent is a blanket consent. It's not by visit because access is the main reason that the school clinic is there, so it's very difficult to get a parent to come in and consent each time. It doesn't mean that they don't contact them by phone. They have alternative ways to reach them: text. I mean, in the beginning, "How can we reach you?" is usually in those forms. So if there was something they wanted to contact the parent about before they did it, they can do that. I did want to clarify, though, that the coverage, if they go on a sliding fee scale, they have to do it by the federal rules, but it doesn't mean they have to always collect all the money, or that there is gonna be any barrier to them getting care based on, you gotta pay this or you can't be seen. I just wanted to clarify.
Laura articulated everything I would say as well, in that the consent allows the access. Nobody's denied care at the fact that there's not, for lack of a better word, cash on hand. You still get the care you need, and there's contact with parents. So I think that's the beauty of engaging a federally qualified health center. The feds, and Mr. Hopes knows this very well, the feds lay down the rules. We don't make up the rules. We follow them. We do it in a compassionate manner, and we just take care of the kids.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere, there might be more.
Chair recognizes Board Member Kennedy to have Mr. Colgate come up and answer more. No, I don't know who.
Actually, I don't have any questions. I've been kind of working with this team for at least a couple of years now, just to be in the room and gather expertise and kind of support in any way that I could. And as Elena has already mentioned, this is a pretty dynamic collaboration that's come together. And I was gonna ask actually Emma to come up for a second, because I met Emma through I met Emma through Healthy Teens Coalition. Emma is a teen health educator through Healthy Teens, but was also a member of the committee. And Emma, you don't have to speak long, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you have, in this process, you've always been a very powerful advocate to me, speaking to what kids, you know, what teenagers and high school students are dealing with. And if you could just talk for a minute about how, what kind of positive influence this could be on your high school experience and your classmates' high school experience?
So when it comes to the school-based health center, first and, one of the most important things for me was the behavioral health aspect of it because mental health issues are such a prominent part of today's society, and it doesn't get the attention it usually deserves. So the fact that this would be ingrained in the school-based health center on campus for students is really like vital to the happiness and health of the students just in general as a whole. You know, I've seen kids freak out about tests in class, and they don't get really the support that they need, and I think that the school-based health center can provide that, not to mention other issues at home they might be dealing with, or just, you know, stuff happens in life, and it gives them a way to learn how to deal with it and cope with it, and be more prepared for their future. And then obviously, with the primary care aspects of it, dental, you know, eye tests, those are all vital things to, you know, if I can't see the board, but I can't get the health or the glasses, the services that I need, how can I do well in school? If I have a toothache all the time, but I can't get the services because they're too far away, or I don't want to miss school for it, but it's on campus, I can focus again. It really kind of hits all those possible issues, and it gives the kids the opportunity to, you know, perform their best in school, which is, obviously, it's so important. Having a good education sets you up for a good future. So the school-based health center allows for that to happen.
Thanks, Emma. If I could, one more thing.
Yes.
Real quick. Thank you, Emma. I told you she's powerful. She's very eloquent young lady. I also, too, want to just mention that, you know, this team has been at this for a long time, and it is really, when Superintendent Saunders got involved, that this thing really took off and got off the ground. And Rosa, for your leadership, you know, this thing wasn't gonna work without a superintendent behind it and without a principal who was gonna be behind it. And finally, to the team at MCR, Dr. Colgate and his team and Mr. Carnegie at MCR, it's just, I mean, for me as a school board member, I've been at this a little over four years now, and I can honestly say that in four years, this is one of the most like meaningful things I've seen, you know, that I've been personally involved with, and this is just really, I know I use this term a lot, but this is just really a kind of a no-brainer for the, not just the health benefit, but the academic benefit, as Emma talked about. So I just want to thank the superintendent and the whole group. I mean, this is community in action, for sure. Thank you.
I did want to acknowledge Emma was just selected as one of eight new members, so she's representing one of eight new states in the National Youth Advisory Council that will be giving youth voice to all the school-based health care around the country.
Board Member Goldit, please.
I'm not so sure to whom much of the record is, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. As a school-based health center, beyond authorizing the center to be located at the school, are there any other aspects of the operation of a health center that the school board is asked to consider?
Well, the only thing that I can think of, and anybody on the task force, of course, could step in, is that right now, the parameters that we have agreed upon include solely serving the students at that school, but perhaps in the future, considering expanding that.
No, ma'am. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. There will be, first of all, I have to, Charlie has given me and Ms. Faison a lot of credit, but honestly, this really has been a force behind Charlie Kennedy as well. I think there's been conversation about it for four years. I just happen to be the person at the right time at the right place that could bring it all together, and this team has done the work. It really has. So we're there to give you the presentation of the ask to get it at the campus, but there will need to be an MOU agreement signed with the Rural Health, yes. And I will tell you, I was on the phone yesterday with Mr. Carnegie, and he will have an agreement ready tomorrow. I'm telling you, that took about two seconds when we got him to the tech. They think I work quick. He works quicker than I do. So, you know, Dr. Colgate and the team have really put all of it together. So we will be coming back at the next board meeting with that agreement of the MOU, because we've listed their obligation and our obligation, but it needs to be formalized. So we will have all that spelled out in an MOU agreement that we will bring before you for the next board meeting.
Okay. I just want to be clear, though, from the standpoint of the school board, that the memorandum of understanding that we have will not in any way infringe on the right of that medical center to be concerned with medical decisions for those children.
Correct. Yes.
We are the location for the center, but all of the medical decisions, all of the... but all of the medical decisions, all of the input, everything is in the context of the physician-patient relationship.
Absolutely. That is their responsibility.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And that, that will be clearly defined.
Right. I, I, I just wanna make, make sure that the doctors are doing the doctoring
Yes, sir.
that we are not involved in that in any way.
Correct.
If I could, uh, that, that's an outstanding question and that's the way we operate our, our organization currently and we would have it no other way. And I, I appreciate you asking the question.
Thank you. Okay. Board Member Hopes.
So, um, I really wanna commend the group and also, um, uh, Mr. Kennedy because this is light years ahead of where it was, I think, a couple of years ago when we first discussed it. Uh, most of the questions are for Dr. Colgate. Uh, so, so Dr. Colgate knows that, that I represented, uh, the federally qualified health centers in the state for probably more than ten years, uh, including MCR. So, um, and been involved in these programs. What's the square footage at Southeast High School that we're talking about?
I don't know that we have an individual present that has that. What I do know is that, uh, we did a walkthrough, flipped the proposed, original proposed space to, uh, uh, our proposed final space. And we brought our own facilities person along. He and I have worked together to open multiple clinics and multiple renovations. Uh, with Ms. Saunders', uh, uh, help and Ms. Face on, uh, w- we believe we've got the perfect setup. What we would propose is two exam rooms, a lab, a reception area. It'll be contiguous with the school nurse. Again, as, as, uh, was, uh, outlined in the presentation, we believe this is a, a collaboration with the current school nurse program and allow us to become more efficient and, and provide a, a continuum of care, really. So, uh, I will tell you, uh, with our fac- facilities, gentlemen, uh, we believe we have adequate square footage to prov- provide the services that are needed. I don't, I don't, I may be a generality, but, uh, I, I, uh, my facilities expert has that square footage.
Okay, sure. You're looking at two exam rooms. And then the only thing I s- would suggest is when you get into the facilities agreement, you look at designated space for mental health counseling, which may not be in the clinic area. And just, just so you cover that, so...
Uh, we, we have identified that and we, we have said space.
And you, you currently have an articulation agreement with MTC, but this is an opportunity to really dramatically expand our student opportunities through that continuum of care. So, just, I guess that would be an expectation with regards to Southeast High where they have the CNA program. I'm hopeful that we'll be bringing an LPN program to Southeast High so those students can rotate through the health center, um, because we need that workforce. The, uh, will this be a designated three thirty grant site for MCR?
It will be brought into scope, meaning that it ha- it's an MUSAN, it's a HIPSA, you know, health provider shortage area in all areas. So, the plan is to bring it into scope. I'm sure that they will have to invest some of their three thirty dollars initially till they get in the, in the black.
Not really the dollars. I just wanna make sure that you're gonna do a scope change. You're gonna do a scope change under the three thirty grant to include this as one of your sites.
Correct.
That will address, uh, uh, Mr. Golden's concerns from the federal tort reform and who's making the decisions.
Yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
Uh, and then what thought has been given to the coordination of Medicaid billings? I, I suspect we have district Medicaid billings that come out of that school. And so, I just want to make sure that we look at coordinating that. I don't even know what our Medicaid billings are from Southeast. I'm assuming that you're, you'll have your PPS encounter rate because this will be one of your sites.
The Medicaid and education is separate.
Yeah, so, Dr. Colgate. So, I'm assuming that it's gonna fall under your PPS rate, which is considerably higher than I'm sure our Medicaid rate is.
That is correct 'cause it'll be under scope.
And these, these patient encounters will also fall under the calculation for your low-income pool funds?
Yes.
Well, it will, I'm telling you.
I know.
So, that's additional...
Well, actually, I knew the answer.
That, that's additional revenue.
I'm looking at my finance guy.
Right, right, right. Oh, I didn't see you was here.
Jeff McNeil is here.
Hi, Jeff. So, so that's an additional revenue stream. Okay. So, I, you know, I guess what I'm getting at is this collaboration is extremely financially feasible, uh, assuming that you get the patient encounters. I'm familiar with, you know, what we've negotiated for you guys over the years. Uh, so, this is sustainable. This is very different than the original program. Uh, this is, this is a very positive step. It follows the models, you know, in Miami-Dade County.
That is correct.
Um...
Which we've studied.
Right, right. So, uh, with that, I think, I think congratulations are in order. I, I like what you've, what you've put together. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience? Okay. Um, Elena, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's great, great presentation. Okay. Okay, the next order of business is, um, discussion of models for transition to in-house auditor. And Heather Jenkins is going to lead this and, uh, thank you very much.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Today, we're gonna talk about a couple of different models for internal auditor programs within school districts. We're gonna start with, um, I contacted several counties that are comparable to our district in size, um, and FTE. Those would include Collier County that has forty-six thousand eight hundred ninety-eight unweighted FTE. Escambia has thirty-nine thousand four hundred eighty-one. Lake at forty-three thousand four hundred ninety. Marion at forty-two thousand four hundred three. And Sarasota at forty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-five. So, we could get an idea of how it's done in different districts. Um, the first that I spoke with was Collier County and they do contract with an outside firm. They did an RFP, um, and in order to find their, their current provider. That provider does a risk assessment every year and they do, do internal funds yearly audit. In addition, they have a five-person audit committee that meets four times a year. The next are the groups that have an in-h- in-house audit. And I spoke with Escambia. They also have lots of information on their website. So, their mission, they have, um, have their own auditors and their mission is to improve fiscal accountability and the public's perception of the management and operation of the school district. So, what they do is they work, through their work, they provide the superintendent, the top management and the board with analysis, appraisals and recommendations in order to strengthen their internal controls and their processes. Their staff is made up of one director, two senior internal auditors, a property audit specialist, an audit administration specialist and an auditing intern. The internal department, auditing department reports through, to the board through their audit committee, which consists of five members and those are a chair, a board appointee, a superintendent appointee, a PTA appointee and a Northwest Florida Institute for Internal Auditors appointee. So, they have interesting, they're a little bit of a different structure. Included in your packet, Michelle sent out, um, a packet to you all with job descriptions so you could see specifically what these individuals are responsible for. Escambia's annual work county, um, the director of internal auditing submits an annual work plan reflecting a schedule of audits and non-audit activities to the audit planning committee for review and then they submit that to the board. They do audit full internal accounts, uh, for financial compliance conducted on a rotating basis. Their plan each year, they audit full procedures for one-third of the elementary and middle schools and one-half of the high schools. All other schools receive limited financial audits and they rate, rotate those yearly. Schools with changes in secretaries, bookkeepers or principals or schools with significant findings in prior years may receive a dis- additional review. In addition, the superintendent may also utilize services of the internal auditing department for reviews or special studies that may require, they may require in the discharge of their duties, as defined by statute. Next, we'll look at Lake County. The Lake County School Board defines internal audit as follows. And internal auditing is independent and objective. It's a consulting activity that's guided by philosophy of adding value to improve the operations of the Lake County School District. They assist the school board in accomplishing their objectives by bringing a systematic and disciplined approach to evaluate and improve the effectiveness of the district, district's governance, risk management and internal control. Um, when I read that, I thought it was a, a very clear statement that, um, helps us to understand that in to- internal audit is there to help us strengthen the way that we function. Their staff, they're made up of one director. Um, I spoke with a gentleman directly. He's a certified internal auditor with over twenty-five years of experience. He reports both administratively and functionally to the school board. Um, this relationship rep- provides the highest level of organizational independence for the internal audit function. He also, um, during our conversation, told me that he audits both internal and external accounts, but they contract their IT audit function out because of the ever-changing needs in IT. So, um, some districts do all internal, some do all budgeted funds and some do a mixture. Their annual work plan is submitted to the school board annually for review and approval based on risk assessment is conducted with senior management. Emergency audits not listed in the work plan may be conducted as necessary and IT audit work is typically outsourced due to the ever-changing technology. They also have an audit committee which is made of five voting members and then they have three non-voting members, which include the school board liaison to the audit committee, the superintendent and the chief financial officer. Marion County, um, they, their budgeted funds are audited by an external fund who is selected there, an RFP. They audit all internal accounts. They do an internal risk assessment and the internal auditor works closely with the CFO to determine the risks at the individual schools or groups of schools. They consist of an internal auditor and two auditing assistants. Their specialty and goal is helping management with identifying and assessing strategic risks, proactively incorporating training and continuous improvement and accountability into management of their school district. They also assist individuals who perform operational and financial activities with risk assessments and action plans in their responsible areas. That helps to heighten awareness of major exposure, loss potential and/or transactional anomalies to facilitate, facilitate discussions of practical ways to manage or avoid them. They participate in internal control improvement initiatives. They help the board carry out their fiduciary responsibilities and they quickly respond to any management concerns such as fraud, employee misconduct or internal control weaknesses that need to be changed. Sarasota County is currently in process. I spoke with their CFO and she's actually, uh, meeting with the board this month to discuss how they would like to structure their internal auditing function as well. Uh, what has brought about a lot of the changes is including, inclu- according to Florida statute one oh one point four two, um, a school district mayor, or in the case of a school district, receiving annual federal, state and local funds in excess of five hundred million dollars, shall employ an internal auditor. The scope of the internal auditor shall not be restricted and shall include every functional and program area in the state school system. It states they'll do, um, an annual risk assessment, um, of all areas of the school and other audits, reviews as the district directs them. So, prior to this legislation, it wasn't required that you have an internal audit function. Several school districts do, do and did have them, but, um, it has now become a requirement. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Oh, Mr. Mannor.
Okay. Um, thank you very much for an excellent presentation. The, the board has considered from time to time having kind of a mixture of an outside internal auditor like we have now and having, uh, also staff, uh, involved with, you know, certain functions and working, uh, w- with the internal auditor. Uh, did you have some, uh, examples or i- is there an example here of where that is employed?
Yes, sir. Um, in Marion County, the budgeted funds are audited by their internal or their, schools are audited by their internal auditor and the budgeted funds are contracted out. There are different school, different models by different school districts. Um, when I spoke with Sarasota, they are also looking at either, um, doing a full external model, an internal model, model or, uh, her concern with splitting was that you may have overlapping work. However, if you do the schools versus budgeted funds, that would be a good way to keep that separate. We currently have our school audits contracted out to Moore Stevens Lovelace. Um, and then we have our internal audit function contracted out to Carings and Car Riggs Ingram. So, we're using two external firms.
I got the impression, uh, of the presentation, Lake County has just one auditor doing everything.
They do except for their IT function. Um, they contract that out. And this gentleman has a wealth of experience. It would depend on, on the staff that you hire. He's, um, he's got over twenty years of experience. That's how he, he has the knowledge base to do that. And districts employ several different staffing models. Some have one, some have two, some have, um, an internal auditor with assistants. So, that's why I tried to provide you the different structures with the different job descriptions to let you see how, how that, that could work for those different patterns.
Okay, so, uh, where we have the Lake, um, staff consisting of the director, and that's just, uh, internal audit. I assume they have a, uh, outside firm for external auditing?
Yes, they have an outside firm that helps them with their CAFR and they have, they contract out whenever they need to do an IT audit. They do do an RFP and contract that function out, um, because of the technology changes so frequently. So, they wanna be able to have someone who's up to date, knowledgeable.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board Member Golden.
Do you have any, um, comparative financial data for the different models?
Ca- like what each program costs?
Yes.
No, sir, I don't, but I can put that together for you if you would like me to.
Yeah. Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Um, Heather, thanks for the presentation. Could you talk a little bit more about, um, I'm, I'm just kind of interested in the, the Escambia County model? Um, and I just wanna make sure I understood you correctly. They, they have an audit committee, um, that works with district staff to make recommendations? And then you, you mentioned that there's a, there was, I believe there was five appointees. Um, is that how they make up the audit committee?
Yes, yes. Um, they have an audit committee and the audit committee works with the internal auditor. Um, they act kind of as an, they act in an advisory function and then they will provide the board with their opinions, um, and ideas based on the information provided from the internal auditor and then the board would make the final decision. I thought that the, um, I thought it was interesting that the PTA had an appointee when I was researching and that, um, the Northwest Florida Internal Audit Department had an impo- an appointee. And also, they have the board and the superintendent. And also, they have the board and the superintendent. So the board has one designate, the superintendent has a designate.
And then Heather, and their, their internal audit, that, that's, that is district staff that reports to the board with the audit committee, or that's a contracted-out internal audit?
It's district staff. They have a director, two senior, senior internals, property audit, an audit admin specialist, and an intern. So they have a complete, full staff. They do everything onsite.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm, I'm wondering if anyone from our audit committee would like to chime in, like our, what? Okay, thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Chairman Agruzzo, if you could come up and share your vast wisdom, or part of it at least.
First of all, thank you, Heather. That was really informative and got some new ideas out of it, too. So thank you. First of all, I'd just like to acknowledge that there are three other members of the audit committee here this afternoon. Rick Hinson is with us. We also have Barbara Vedder, who you saw this morning, and we are very happy to see Mr. Joe Blitsko here this afternoon. So we're excited about that. Just a few comments related to what Heather was talking about, and also what the audit committee has recommended to this board. We've talked about bringing to the district an in-house internal audit function within the committee for several years, and we have looked at various models. A lot of what is currently done in the internal audit field is similar to what was presented to you. Internal audit is different from the group that looks at your financials. Internal audit is designed to be more of a help to the district, so that there should be more interaction, there should be more helping the district avoid some of the pitfalls that occur when the auditor general is here or the external auditor comes in to do the financials. We do have an annual work plan. A five-year risk assessment was done two years ago, and we do create that annual work plan, which you do approve, like these other districts are doing. And matter of fact, when we have to change that work plan because we've been asked to move hours to accommodate additional or special audits, we bring those changes to you, and last time I presented that to you was at a workshop about a month ago. So this evening, on your agenda, in your consent agenda, there is an item asking you to approve those changes in hours because we moved some things around. And so there are those kinds of similarities. As we have talked about doing this, we are not at this point ready to advocate to you that you move all of the internal audit function in-house. And we have, as a committee, actually recommended, and these are the words we used, that only a limited audit work be moved in-house at this time, and that the district continue to contract with an external internal auditor for most of the current audit functions. We see this as a transition process, which you can take as far as you want over time. But right now, to start small, partly because you have to identify highly qualified staff, we recommend that whoever is doing this, of course, reports to the board. And you will need people who are able to stand on their own two feet as they work within the district, because they have to be experts, they have to command the respect and support of the district, and they have to be able to work in a positive way with staff while also maintaining their independence, because their task is to make sure you are getting clear, accurate, and complete information. Two models that we have presented to you, one which is just have a couple of staff members reporting to the board. But the model that is similar to a couple of districts in here would be to have a director. That director would report to the board, and then you can build a department reporting to that director. And again, a highly qualified individual, which I would also caution you means that this is not a money-saving endeavor, at least not initially. To build that department, you're going to have to fund somebody at a pretty high level. And you are going to have to maintain the audit work that is currently being done, particularly with the legislation that Heather referred to that goes into effect July 1. And one of the things I wanted to talk to you about is, we have a five-year plan. According to this legislation, you have to do that five-year plan in five years. So when we say to you, we're going to hold the audit of transportation this year, we're not going to be able to do that in the future. We're going to have to move through that audit plan. So we have to have some kind of provisions for special audits and things. So I think we, as we're looking at the budget and we're looking at the contract to continue with internal auditing and how we build inside, we need to be cognizant of that, that there's actually more audit work coming your way. And to do it in a way where an in-house person and the audit, external auditor, would be working together on some activities, there are, we would work as an audit committee with them to devise that work plan of what's going to be done outside, what will be done in-house, what could be done collaboratively between the two. And Heather has given you some examples that we have talked about, internal accounts especially. You don't need to contract with MSL or someone to do those, except perhaps with high-risk schools once every three years or periodically, whereas, and then annually, you can do a certain number of schools in-house rather than put that kind of work out. Couple of other examples I would give you is when audits are done, and that work is being taken care of and the findings are being addressed, there are audits that are redone to make sure, they're called PARs, post-audit reviews, to make sure that work is being done. That would be a perfect opportunity for someone in-house to do an interim post-audit review to make sure the action plan has actually been followed, the findings done. And then when it's appropriate, you can have an external person come in and verify that. The task that we were just recently asked to do about when a bookkeeper leaves or a principal leaves, and you want to return to the best practice of auditing the books in the school, perfect task for an in-house because they're ready to do it at any moment. If you find something serious and you need a forensic auditor to come in, that's where you have an external internal auditor who can provide that services. So I think there's a way to do this collaboratively, but not all at once. Build it slowly. Build a budget around it, build that interaction, and gradually, you can move more and more as the district is ready to add that staff. But the funding of it is going to be crucial, and getting the right people here is going to be critically important to making this work. Let's see, I think I talked a lot. Anything else the rest of this committee thinks I have missed that they would like to add? Mr. Blitsko? Never shy. We rely on his expertise. He is the longest-serving member of our audit committee, I believe. And Mr. Kimsey and Ms. Vedder are also from the original.
Well, the bottom line is this. What are we going to do? And you have an audit committee, and the audit committee will make recommendations. And as Susan has said, our recommend, initial recommendation is to have and bring on staff to work with the external internal auditor, to keep this going on eventually, to bring it in-house. But the first step is to have the external internal auditor be in charge of the department, have the individuals, and have an individual or two working with him, working with them, and then move forward. And we have in place our system to work with the external internal auditor, and I think that's the way we should go. And I think that sometime or another, somebody will say, what is the Manati Kani plan, and use it. Because I think, because I think it's the right thing to do. And eventually, some years down the line, maybe sooner than later, that we have a completely in-house internal audit, and only use the external internal auditor for special projects. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Blitsko?
Mr. Mannor, I have the information, Reverend Goldin has requested.
Yeah, okay. Okay, why don't, why don't we do that? We'll come back to Susan and Joe in a second. Don't run away.
In order to hire a director of internal audit, it would be about $130,000. That includes benefits. You're looking at about $78,000 for your standard auditor, and currently, we spend $350,000 for our contracted services. So it would be, depending on how you structured the department, would be how you would determine the cost savings or difference. Keeping in mind, if you have, not to disagree with Dr. Agruzzo, but if you have an employee on staff, those, you will have more freedom of use of hours than you would with an external auditor, because their contracts are basically set based on hours.
And that was, I know that Collier County, you said, has an external auditor.
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it the custom of the trade that the, that the rates are set hourly? Or is it possible to fix, get a fixed-fee contract for a particular period?
They typically have a billable rate per hour depending on the level of, of service. You have a partner, sometimes you have a, it depends on the individual reviewing your items. So you usually get a standard rate. If you have a certified internal auditor, if you have one, someone that specializes in a specific function, those rates are typically set when they do their proposal. And then they return how many hours they believe it may take to complete your audit.
I, I have a couple of questions to Joe or Susan. I understand, you know, Joe to at least say that we should have an internal, internal, you know, auditor, reporting to our external internal auditor with that staff. And I'm, I'm inferring that, that we should, you know, schedule that to, you know, begin in this next fiscal year, and that we should account for that in our 1920, you know, budget. And start getting that set up for expanding duties of an internal, 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 you know, auditing, you know, function, and beginning with, I don't know, less intense activities and kind of grow from, from that. And besides having an internal, internal auditor, I would assume that there would be some kind of sub-staff to assist that internal, internal auditor. It sounds kind of strange to me, but, and kind of an office of internal, internal auditing and reporting to our external internal auditor. Is that what you, or is that the outline of what you're recommending?
That's similar to what we're recommending. We would suggest the person actually reports to the board, but the audit committee would take on the responsibility for monitoring that work and coordinating the work with the internal auditor, just as we do now with the external auditor, and report that information back to you, because we do report to you. So, but we would recommend that the auditors, whoever is in-house in that function, needs to be reporting to the board to maintain its independence. And that's what you're seeing these other districts are doing for the most part. In terms of the cost, there are various ways to do this. One of the concerns I think that I have is you do not want to have a rotating door of auditors coming in and leaving, because you lose your institutional memory when you do that. And so, and that's something for the board to discuss, is that what salary rate do you want to hire these individuals? Will this become a training for them to move on to an audit firm? Or is it something intended where you will actually build a department and hopefully get some people who stay long-term, as this gentleman did for 25 years in this one district? And so that's some of the decision-making you do have to, you know, look at. I know that you are pressed at this time to start thinking about what it is you want to spend, especially because there is a recommendation out there for hiring and bringing in an internal auditor for beginning in July 1. What I would suggest, and I've not talked to the audit committee about this, but just from what I have seen us having to do with moving some hours around, I would suggest that you bring, that you bring an internal, an external firm into the school district next year for the same contract hours you have this year, and begin to build the internal audit function with a couple of people, the in-house function with a couple of people. And then as you build that department, you can begin to lower the external costs. But because of the amount of work that has to be done, I'm a little concerned if we initially start to reduce that budget. To the Reverend's question, it is a fixed amount contract. It's, I think, $350,000, but it is billed by hours depending on who does what work.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. I was checking to see my fellow board members, if they had a follow-up question to your statement. Okay. I thought I heard you say to bring in from outside, externally, a, into the district employee, an outside auditing firm, okay? Can you define that for me, what you intended by saying an outside firm?
Let me be very clear. I'm, what we, what the audit committee has recommended to you is that you have the beginnings of an in-house internal audit department, the beginnings to start, but that you maintain your contract with the outside internal auditing firm. So you have both. And that you begin to build the in-house over time, as Mr. Blitsko described. And as that builds, you can then begin to reduce the dependency on the outside firm. But the firm is outside. They are contracted with this school board as they are currently.
Okay, thank you. Board member Golden.
Yes, sir. I'm new, so everybody else here probably already knows the answer to this. Yeah, yeah, Jim, I'm kind of new at this, so everybody else kind of probably already has an idea, but we've got auditors. I mean, have we had them like 20 years? Or would I be right in saying that when this district found itself embroiled in a financial scandal several years back, and we wound up being audited by the state, and as part of the protections that came out of that, we decided that we wanted to have an independent audit function?
Yes.
Is that right so far?
Yes.
Okay. So now, we've had this independent audit function for the last few years. I'm told that we're on solid financial footing, that we're doing well, and that we're accounting for the dollars. That's because we've gotten good reports from external auditors. Is that right?
Yes.
So my question is, I know this is not switching horses in the middle of the stream, but my question is, if we've been brought this far on solid ground by relying on arms-length information that's been given to us, why would we want to put ourselves back in the posture of having employees who would tell us what we want to hear? And then we wind up back where we were 10 years ago?
Yes.
I don't know whether that's a question or a statement, but I'm concerned about why are we doing what we're doing?
And I, just if I could, Dr. Hope, for one second, that is what we are concerned about, which is why we have said, go slow. A little bit, under control, reporting to the board, monitored by the audit committee. Go slow, because we don't want you to return to where you were seven or eight years ago.
Okay, board recognizes, board member Hope, please.
Mr. Chairman Fur, and those are excellent points, Reverend Golden. I think in, in looking at it, I'll tie it to a problem that we had, not with this administration, with the prior administration. There, there were challenges at times with the internal auditor getting access to the information that they're requesting. And so, one way to look at, at both addressing that issue and also looking at a considerable amount of the cost in the prior, prior year with the prior administration, was a was a tremendous amount of time going back and forth to try to get the information to answer the questions that the board had. So, so one strategy would be to have an internal resource that would report to the board, that would be that point person by the outside internal auditors to, to, to coordinate the meetings, to collect the information, provide, you know, the data. Uh, and in so, they'd be learning that, that, that function. But you're, but you're absolutely right. We, we do have a, a, a sound system that is operating very effectively and efficiently with an excellent volunteer audit committee, members that have been very engaged, and then an external, internal auditor that, that really knows the organization. But the thought was to begin a very slow transition, and that first transition would have, be an internal resource that reports to the board, either through the audit committee or directly to the board. That would be an internal resource to ensure the timely attainment of information and then access to areas in order to conduct their audit. Because it's, it's not just functional, uh, uh, financial. The internal audit function helps us in addressing findings of the operational audit, uh, which many times has, has nothing to do with finances. It has to do with policies, procedures, the way in which we're operating. And so, that, that there, that also addresses the question that we had for the legislature with regards to intent. Does our contracted external internal auditor meet the statutory criteria for a district of our size to employ an internal auditor? And so, um, I, I personally believe that it's important that we stay on the course. I do believe it would be helpful to both the outside contractor and to the board to have a, a, an employed resource that has a fixed cost to be able to do that work. And, and more importantly, to kind of maintain our, our, our diligence in, in overseeing the district. Because keep in mind, we're going to be moving towards, you know, renewing our, our tax authority in a few years. And I, I would not want to lose the confidence that we've been gaining in the public through our fiscal stewardship and, and, and oversight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like- Board Member Golden.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Then, are we really looking for, at, at this stage as a first step, are we really looking already for an internal auditor? Or are we looking for an external internal auditor liaison that reports to the board? Because, yeah, because I, what I'm, what I'm hea- what I'm hearing is, well, we got somebody that really does the job, but from time to time before, they had a hard time getting the information they needed, uh, getting in touch with somebody. The superintendent is busy doing her, so I don't know whether this would be the, the, the CFO person or whether it would be the, uh, deputy superintendent of operations. But there ought to be a human being that the external internal auditor can say, I need this. And they ought to have the authority from the board to say, I want you to give me this department head, that department head, that. As opposed to saying, I'm an internal auditor. Because that, to me, I don't, I don't know. I'm, I'm not articulating this very well, but I'm, it just seems like if we got a good system and all we really have is a, is a, is a contact problem, let's start there. And maybe that contact person will gain the expertise and the knowledge to become the internal auditor over time. If, if that's what we are. Does that make sense?
Board, Board Member Golden, what you, all of what you says, said, uh, all makes vent, makes sense. And expresses, I, I think, um, concerns and ideas, you know, of, of other board members. But I, I think that Superintendent Saunders has some insights to share with us right now about this too.
Yes, sir. The reason we did need to bring it up was because if we did need to move in the direction of hiring someone, we needed to create a job description and also put it in our budget. Uh, one thing that was mentioned by Dr. Agruso as well as in the presentation, we have two external internal operators. One doing our departments and one doing our school's internal accounts. I believe the Marion County model used an internal, internal auditor, an employee, that did the school internal accounts and then had an outside agency doing the departments. That might be a good place to start. Uh, I know there was discussion in the last report that we may, uh, pull back on some of our internal audits because we've done pretty well. However, we know with this new system, I really think all of our internal accounts next year do need to be audited ju- just because of that. By having someone do the internal accounts, every time a bookkeeper changes or a principal changes, best practice should have an auditor going in there. I don't know that you really need an outside firm unless there's some alarming problem. I, I do think it would be more efficient and more cost-effective to have an employee that did that function. That might be a good place to start, but they can also be that liaison person to coordinate with the outs- uh, outside internal operator. So they would have a lot of functionality. We, we would have plenty of work to keep them busy beyond just being a liaison. So if that is something, we could pull back on one of our external operators that we're hiring by having our own person do internal accounts. Again, they report to the board, they work with the audit committee, they work in tandem with the, uh, outside auditor. But that might be a way to start down the path. But, um, the salary is set by the district range of director's salary. Uh, but we just need to come up with a job description. We can easily go pull some of existing in other districts. But we just need to kind of know a direction so we could get started on that path. And i- if that's what, wha- whatever y'all want to do, we just need to budget and, and make a plan if you want to have it in place for next year.
Okay. Board Member Hope?
Yeah, I do, I, I need, I guess I need clarification. We don't, we don't hire two external auditors for an internal audit function. During the years that the state doesn't do our financial audit, we hire an outside auditing firm that does the financial audit and of the school. That's different. That, that, that we will still have to do on the years that the state doesn't.
Right, 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 right. But we have an outside person doing our internal-
Oh, you have somebody else that comes in and does the school internal account separate from
Yes.
the other firm. Okay, 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 okay.
The MSL, which is the auditing firm that does the financials when the AG is not here. They also do your school accounts. This year, they are just doing the internal accounts.
I got you, I got you. Okay, perfect, perfect, perfect.
And what you saw from the presentation-
Right, it's, it's their internal financial accounts. It's not the operational issues, right, right. So, so, so in that, what, what Reverend Golden mentioned and what the superintendent mentioned is we could actually use that person, if they have the adequate credentials, to do the, the internal accounts, um, which probably would improve the, the, the effectiveness, the effectiveness.
Because you could do much more in-depth analysis of what's going on.
That makes sense, that makes sense.
That would be a good start.
And you would have the funding then to almost, I think it's a fifty-two thousand dollar contract for that?
Yeah, so you'd, you'd partially find that, yes. And you would, that would take the place of that.
And so we could find that balance there. Uh, Mr. Blisco had one more thing he wanted to say, if you don't mind.
One more comment. We did go out and have an RFQ for internal audit services. And there were two firms that proposed on the audit. One is CRI and the other is Ma- Baldwin and Jenkins. And I don't know what the secret is, but the, uh, audit committee recommended that's the, uh, we contract with CRI and that we, uh, engage in negotiations to finalize the contract. So I think it's important at this time to add to our conversation a comment from Mr. Shin from CRI for, see what he has to say about it. So if you agree, uh, Byron, would you come up and make some comments?
Okay. Barbara, thank you.
All auditing revolves around internal control. And with this, um, computer system, we have had a bunch of bumps. And I think there may be some surprises here and there that we're not sort of sure of. The Auditor General's coming in this year to do the performance audit, and I think it would be prudent to wait until the Auditor General has gone to make this decision of how much we're going to give to the outside. I don't have any problem with the internal accounts, but I don't think at this point in time, we're ready to have a full in-house auditing department. And I think that the, the, what we have been doing has worked extremely well as Reverend Golden pointed out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Will, will you please identify yourself, please, sir?
I'm Byron Shin. I'm a, an alumni of your school district.
Okay, thank you. Good enough for me.
Thank you. And thank you very much for your presentation and update. We have right now about seven different people within our organization currently working on six different projects that are currently underway right now. Many of them are in closure status. Some are going for, for our April eighteenth, um, audit committee meeting. And then we'll have an update to the board the following week. In our proposal, we put down, you know, two different paths. I think that just some general observations from my perspective, sharing with the board and the management, is there's an awful lot being tackled by your executive management team and by finance and operations. How good we are supports the classroom. Some of the things we're trying to tackle in short order are looking at the cost potential in the new school construction. So we're fast-tracking some of that and trying to get your report on an interim, uh, by, before the end of June. Uh, some of these take additional manpower to go at that speed. We believe we have the room and the budget. However, there is a current bill that is passed the Senate last week. It's the accountability bill. It's been four years. The Auditor General's tried to put this through. Uh, this year it passed the full Senate last week. It's on the House floor this week, and it's expected to pass with no changes, and then will be in the governor's hands the following week. This brightlines the accountability function and the transparency function and oversight of our taxpayer dollars. And it better defines the audit committee and the audit group that oversees the hiring of that and also oversees the financial accountability of you, the elected officials. And it holds the superintendent accountable, and it loops in with her statutes around the superintendent's roles and then loops in the chief financial officer. So it's very serious. Uh, obviously, the state has taken it upon themselves to make sure that districts fully understand their responsibility. And they've gone so far as to make it a first-degree misdemeanor if an auditor general or an extension like an internal auditor is not given access. So, and they, um, the AG office has given the authority for, in this statute, for a hundred thousand dollars of emergency funding to do investigations. If they feel like the external auditors or the internal auditors have found something that's heightened to that level, they can move swiftly. And all this is coordinated with the Audit Judiciary Committee. There have been items that have been two peats and three peats in the past. And part of our recommendation, as good as Heather can be and as how many hours she can work with her team, there are things that just need to be on a systemic basis to get you comfortable. Some of the basics, like bank reconciliations and the documentation of the timeliness of that. Because that was something that slipped up, got a second. We came in a year ago and checked on it. Something like that, along with the timeliness of payroll tax returns, the oversight and proofing of the compensation when you do back pay and the like. Something that I'm sure the district would love to have somebody ready to go to help Heather and her team out to make sure. It's nice to look over and have somebody right there available. And how we could get past, we're so dug in on trying to get some of the basics wrapped up, and we've come a long way, Reverend Golden. But the vision is to get it to where it's systemic. And that's what this bill's trying to do, is to require a systemic process internally. And I think that having somebody inside this liaison to coordinate it, because there's things that happen throughout the year, and I get the phone call from sometimes both of them saying, we need to talk today. We need you in here. We need you educated. Forty years of doing this. So I've seen a lot. Bob Christopher's sitting over here. Uh, he might have a couple past me. So he, he, he trained me for ten, ten years of that forty. Thank you. Thanks, Bob. But anyway, I, I think that there's a place for it. I think it's really, really important that they answer to the board. And I think the big slip up, that they have to have access from, when Heather gets in a jam, but she's got to call Byron. She has, she can text me. She's texted me before. We've talked while she's driving to work in the morning. So the last thing she wants to hear from is Byron, but I'll call her. I try not to bother because she's got all these other people swarming around her too. But it'd be nice to have somebody there that would be coordinated with us and to make them where they can move quicker and be coordinated. And if there's something we could do, that would be it, is trying to coordinate this. Now, the difference is having the resources of a big organization like us to be able to bring them to bear to move fast on some items is a plus. However, you don't want to use that very often, but we need it right now, like with this construction area. So anyway, I just gave you a few examples of how we could use somebody like that. So I think this was the year we, we probably, and I would want, if it was me, I wouldn't name too low. I would get a pretty qualified person. I would get somebody that's got some savviness because we're going to lean on that person from both sides. And you see the superintendent nodding?
Yeah, we do.
We got some pretty big fish to fry here, and it's going to take some, some people with some moxie to be able to communicate and work through it. And the sensitivity of the information is really, really important in how we deal with it.
Thank you. Superintendent Saunders?
Just following up, uh, with, with what he said, a- as working in conjunction. But right now, you know, we have, uh, new principals starting next year, some change of organization, some change of bookkeepers. If I had a new person starting July one, that's where we're going to task them to be going through and, and hitting all those schools and making sure that all those internal accounts are being addressed. Again, that was a, a different outside internal auditor doing that function because really, uh, SCR really, or, or CRI is really dealing with our department budgets. They really don't work on that, but we've had to call them in, uh, when we've had some things arise to come in and do the audit. It, it's more cost-effective on their time and resources for us to have a different, a different type of person doing that, unless there was some unusual circumstance. So, but board's direction, we just need to know. So if you want some type of person in that capacity, we've got to write a job description and go through a number of steps to make that happen for next year.
And if the board wishes and wants to pursue this, I would be happy to work with Heather and Ms. Saunders. Um, and we can actually put together a plan, a job description. I can run it through the audit committee at our meeting next week so that we could actually have something presented to you for discussion pretty quickly. have something presented to you for discussion pretty quickly in terms of a plan.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Board Member Golden?
You know, I'm so sorry. The Vice Chair had her hand up a long time ago.
Did you have a hand? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Vice Chair Messenger.
Um, no, it's okay. I just, we talked about this about two years ago. I pulled up our policy. And if we decide that we want to hire somebody, we probably need to revisit our policy. And I'm not a lawyer. I'm looking at you two. But it, it does say that the internal audit function may be, may be performed by a firm of certified public accountants or by another qualified external resource who possesses the requisite skills, blah, 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 blah. I paraphrase that part.
That's, that's legal talk.
Yeah. I'm just saying, what's the definition of external? Um, so, I'm just saying that that, I know, is a whole nother ball of wax, because then we have to publicly notice that we want to change that. If that is something that y'all lawyers decide that we need to do, which to me, it sounds like we would. I remember when we had this conversation two years ago, I was wholeheartedly in favor of keeping that language and having it solely external. And the, the reason really was that back when the, everything happened in 2012, 2013, the people that were, the internal auditors were truly internal and did not answer to the Board. And I think what I'm hearing is the proposal now is that they would not answer to, or the district, they would answer to the Board.
Correct.
And that is it. And so, I'm, I'm not sure how much I'm willing to relinquish to a person in that position, but if the rest of the Board would like to try that, I will be willing to try that in the circumstances I think we've discussed, which would be the, the school internal accounts and those types of things. I can see the value in that, and it doesn't sound like that's really happening, or if it is happening, it's happening probably at great expense when it probably doesn't need to be. And so, I could see the value in, 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 in trying that. I'm not sure I'd see, be in favor of anything further than that at this point.
Board, Board Member Golden?
Yeah, in light of what Vice Chairman Messenger said, I have two questions. One of Attorney Di and one of Mr. Shin. Mr. Di, does it meet the definition of external if the person that we're talking about bringing in as a liaison to the internal, now, to the external internal auditor and working directly for the Board? Is that someone that meets that policy definition?
Could you ask that again?
Okay. She just read a policy that you all have from two years ago.
Yeah.
That talked about an external person being in this internal.
Could we call it outside person rather than, because I think internal, external have their terms of art.
Okay, well, but in, in the policy, it said external.
Yeah.
And so, the question I'm asking you is, do we need to change the policy to bring somebody in that works as a liaison to the external?
Yeah.
And is hired to work for the Board?
As a liaison?
Yes.
I, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
As long as the liaison isn't performing the audit function, they're just a go-between? Is that what you see a liaison doing?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Then, Mr. Shin, my question to you is, you've heard all of this.
Yes, sir.
No, you know what? I'm sorry. It's not you. Mr. Gr, I popped that out. Dr. Russo?
Yes.
Okay. You said that you, that there were two entities that came forward as being interested?
Yes.
Oh, there were two? Okay. So, and I don't want to put you on spice or whatever. I'd rather not say right now. But of the two, given all of the discussion and you heard, and given what we're trying to accomplish here, what would your recommendation be to the Board?
Our recommendation about the RFQ?
Yes. You said you had two people that had responded.
We do, and we did make a recommendation. Can I say this out loud? Nope, she's not here. I can say this out loud? Yes, we recommended that the Board continue with CRI, but we did request some negotiations for a couple of changes we would like to see in staffing and about how they do their business in terms of billing. I think there was something on that. Yes.
That's right. Thank you. Thank you.
To, to speak to the policy, if the liaison you're talking about to do the audits would have to be an auditor and someone with a certification, so I believe you would have to change that policy. We have the original language somewhere, because you had a big debate at that time about whether we should have the language include the possibility of in-house, but you weren't, and that's understandable, you were not ready to go in that direction at that time. So, I think you can change the language, and I would expect we can proceed with planning for this and while you're also doing a policy change. And so, we can find that language for you. It's like one or two words is all you need to make it work, I think.
Well, okay. Okay. Board Member Hope?
I, I think the only thing I would add is, I think it can be crafted in the job description that the person is not the internal auditor. It may be an auditor analyst that has the qualifications as meeting the certification, but I would think that when these internal accounts are signed off on, that information would be going to the Audit Committee, it would go to the internal auditor.
Yes.
So, I don't think, I don't think we're deviating from the external independent nature of it, because I think when the day is done, the final sign-off of those internal account audits will come through the Audit Committee.
Yes.
And the, the contracted internal auditor.
And would be approved by the Board.
Right.
Which would not necessitate.
Correct.
A change in the policy.
So, we would just put it in the job description.
Description, okay. Okay.
I, I think we want to keep faith.
Mr. Chair, let me.
Yeah. Mr. Di?
The, the statute governing internal auditors is changing this summer on July 1, and there's been some discussion among the other school board attorneys about that, the new language, talking about internal auditors that says, "May, or in the case of a school district, receiving annual federal, state, and local funds in excess of $500 million, shall employ an internal auditor." And, and, yeah, and the discussion has been among school districts is that, is employment meaning somebody in-house, or does it mean bringing an outside firm in to perform the functions of an internal auditor? Does that fit the definition of, of employment? And I'll tell you the discussion that I've seen, and I agree with it, is that hiring a firm does fit the definition of employment. You know, it doesn't mean you have to bring in, add, add to staff. It just means if, if you can, if you want to, but, but keeping, keeping an outside firm, as your internal auditor does, meet the definition of the statute, at least among the, the attorneys that advise school boards around the state.
But I, I think Vice Chair Messenger's concern is that we have a policy that describes a particular position as being someone external. And so, maybe the ambivalence is in the word external, which you say is cured by the statute, because it allows you to have someone who meets these qualifications working for an outside firm that would be called an internal auditor.
It's cured by the opinions of a group of attorneys. I'm not, until, until the legislature addresses it or a court addresses it, you know. But, but, but I, the whole notion of employment of an individual being met by hiring a consultant that does that function is, is so widespread, I do not think the legislature means adding staff in order to do this function. I can be surprised, though.
Is that sufficient, Vice Chair?
I, I just said the lawyers have to decide what that word means.
Okay.
If it's, Mr. Chair, if it's a NEOLA policy, they'll be providing an updated policy to meet the, the statute.
Well, and to Mrs. Boy's credit, she said, "Well, you know, it's also in our bylaws and in our," I think you were referencing 1-0157, is that what you said? And in that one, it, it does just say that we're going to have financial verification by an internal auditor and that they shall report directly to us, and that, that is all that one says. You know, it's just, there's in other places, other information.
If we've got somebody that wants to work with us, you know, and we've come.
Because they're so rare, people that want to work with us.
Well, I don't.
Was that what you're saying?
Saying that.
Okay. We, we have some other. To kind of wrap this up, the, I, I think where we're at, the, the language in 6835 is pretty loose with respect to how, how we hire. In fact, we talk about the function, and I, I think that arguments could be made on either side of the very legitimate issue that Board Member Messenger, you know, raises. At, at the same time, I think that it's vague enough to justify whatever we do. That's my, as Board Chair, interpret that. I don't know of any case law that, you know, gives application to this, but what we, as a Board, you know, this is a workshop, we're not going to vote today, but there is, I think, a consensus that, not tonight, but maybe at the next meeting, we talk about hiring someone to perform some internal audit functions as referred to in NEOLA 6835, to, you know, work with the Audit Committee, work with our external internal auditor, performing, you know, various, maybe we would specify functions that are suggested by the Audit Committee, by the Superintendent, and our external internal audit auditor, you know, to perform that as kind of a segue maybe into further things, but at least initially, you know, to have a contract and an authorization to, you know, try to find someone who would fit those duties and have a salary that would attract a highly qualified person at least to get this thing rolling. And it may be we, we talk in terms of, you know, what kind of staff. We're not going to talk about, you know, building up a big bureaucracy, but if you're going to have a high-paid CPA, internal auditor, you know, are we going to have a secretary or some kind of assistant that, that should be working with him, or maybe just what? But we're not going to decide it right now or at tonight's meeting, but the, the next, you know, Board meeting or after that, we need to roll on that if we're going to, you know, be moving into the next year. And this is a critical time, because we're setting the budget.
Yes, circus.
Okay. So, that's, that's very high on the to-do list. And I, I think with that, any problems, then we'll move on to our next item on the, unless, you know, Chair Grusso, do you have some further comments or?
No, we're fine. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk with you about this.
Well, thank you for the great amount you've done. And, Mr. Shin, thank you very much for.
Thank you very much.
A Manatee graduate, like our Secretary of Agriculture. Right. I'm going to, up, up in Tallahassee, there's one Cabinet Member and the President of the Senate, they are graduates of Manatee County Schools, and I don't think anybody, any other.
I heard of that commission once.
Palmetto High School. Yeah. And, and, you know, there's something to brag about. Manatee County Schools have the, the most high-position people in Tallahassee. Yeah. Okay. So, much for bragging. We have some, we have some people out here who are very interested in the next item on our workshop agenda. Okay. The, we're going to have a review of Audit Committee and Citizens Financial Oversight Committee Charter. Okay, it's 5:00 PM according to my watch. We've had some people waiting around here for a couple hours, and it's, can we start on this? And maybe we have to continue. We're going to have to take, you know, a break by 5:30.
Before then.
What, before, what? Okay.
We have to move downstairs. We have to move downstairs. It should be done by 5:20 at the latest.
Well, that's.
We have 20 minutes.
Okay. You heard it from the boss. We're, we're going to recess at 5:15. Does that work?
That works.
Okay. And I don't think that amount of time does justice to what we need to, you know, discuss. I'm going to look to the wisdom of my fellow Board members. Should we continue this to another day? You know, Item 3, Review of Audit Committee and Citizens Financial Oversight Committee. I'm inclined to feel that way myself, but, okay. Board Member Kennedy?
I don't, I don't want to speak for the members of especially the Citizens Financial Oversight Committee, but if I were one of their members, and I had been sitting here for two hours, I would at least like to get the discussion started.
Okay.
Here are a few ideas, which we can then pick up. There's a meeting of that committee next week, but at least it lets, let's get a couple things out that we can think about and chew on and.
Okay.
Still be in plenty of time.
Okay. And Board Member Golden?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I visited the last meeting that they had, and I'm, there were some questions that I raised and that came up in the context of their deliberations. They, they are wanting to be obviously a part of what we're trying to accomplish here as a Board. I think that there are some organizational and some administrative issues that need to be addressed, and just, just as a starting point for discussion, there were three sets of members, some with a three-year term and some with a two-year term and some with a one-year term, and then the question arose is, is your term up now? And do the terms begin July 1, 2019? A lot of different things. Some people were coming off, some people didn't want to be reappointed. There was a question that raised about how the initial appointments were given, whether all of the Board at that time had an opportunity to participate in the selection and election of, of those people. So, I would welcome an extended discussion that begins there, and as far as I'm concerned, with a new slate.
Okay.
That we start out discussing who will be the Citizens Financial, Financial Oversight Committee and their terms and how they were selected by the entire Board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we got, let, let me ask, Michelle, when, when would be a good time that would allow, you know, for at least 90 minutes, you know, for, you know, discussing, you know, this review of the Audit Committee and the Citizens Financial Oversight Charter Committee? Do you have some nominations for sometime, you know, a week from now or sometime before the next, you know, Board Member, Board meeting?
We are going to have a set of special workshop for that. Our, the April 23rd workshop already has six things on it. We're going to have to make that one an earlier, we're going to have to start that one early just to get through those items. May 14th, we've already got items that have to be on that. So, I would suggest that you set a separate workshop to dedicate it just to this discussion.
That sounds wise to me. Yeah. You say the 23rd, which would be two weeks from today, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That sounds pretty full already. What, let me.
You can't put anything else on that.
Okay, okay. Do you have some other nominations?
Yeah. Didn't they say that they are meeting next week?
Well, they, they can have a meeting every night of the week if they want, but I'm trying to find out when we can meet.
Well, I'm trying to see if we could, since they already going to be a great number, can we meet when? Can we meet then?
No.
Don't we do that?
No.
No, okay.
Okay. I'm, Michelle knows more about scheduling than I do. We're, we're thinking in terms of what would be the earliest date that we could have a workshop just limited to this, you know, that would be 90 minutes? And ideally, we're talking, you know, before the next Board meeting.
Mr. Di, that is going to require seven days' notice, right? So, I wouldn't be able to place an ad until tomorrow, so it wouldn't run until the 11th. So, the 18th or 19th are your choices.
What, what day?
And we're closed the 19th. So, I'm thinking April 18th. So I'm thinking April eighteenth.
April eighteenth.
Yes, sir. Now, there is an Audit Committee meeting from two to five on April eighteenth.
Wow, okay. Two to five, okay. What, what, what about in the morning? Something like on the eighteenth? Now, I don't have any idea really of my, my private schedule, but I would try to, um, what day of the week is that?
That is a Thursday.
Thursday, uh-
Ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock, April eighteenth. Okay. Does anybody have a, you know, a real clear conflict that?
I, I can't do that, but you know, if everybody else can, then-
No, we need you there.
Yeah.
Well, I think every-
My, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I guess, I guess my question is on the urgency. I'm concerned that Mr. Golden was talking about addressing the entire Oversight Committee and how they got appointed and possibly reappointing. We really are going to be confronted with six members that will be needing reappointment or appointment by July first, according to the charter, unless what we're doing is opening up the entire charter and starting, I mean, I guess, I, I guess my question is the intent. And do we need to do this, this month? Or do we just need to make sure that we address this before the six members that have the one-year term roll off moving into July first?
If that's a question I can answer. As I understand it of the existing, as I understand it of the existing, uh, board, nine of them, uh, were appointed at one time with, out regard to whether they were one year, two year, three years. So that infected the whole process of participation and support from the whole board, because even if you do fifteen members, that's each of us having three nominations, one for one year, one for two years, and one for three years. I don't know how it was done, and that's probably why we need an hour and a half to discuss it. And if we're gonna get it right, get it right in its entirety, that's all.
Michelle, um, I think it's important, you know, that all board members be able to attend, uh, you know, the discussions.
How about April twenty-second, Monday?
Okay, four twenty-two. Does anybody have a? Okay. Where are your bonnet?
Uh, it's Passover.
Oh, where are you, where are your Passovers?
That's a good question.
Okay.
I don't know where my children are gonna be yet.
Okay. Four twenty-two, Monday, uh, and any time, any-
I cannot, I cannot do it, that's the second day of Passover. I cannot do the second day of Passover.
Okay, so, and then the next board meeting is the twenty-third? Okay. So what about on the twenty-fourth? Is, is there time available?
I could probably do the morning, but I have, there, this is our busy time for the Children's Services Advisory Board, where we're meeting every single week, so I can't meet in the afternoon.
And I'm in Tallahassee, that's, I'm in Tallahassee, that's the end. We're never getting to the end of the session, I mean, that's-
Let's try four twenty-five.
That's Thursdays, I can't really do Thursdays.
Okay, four twenty-six. Seriously, we're gonna get this done.
My suggestion is we wait till the end of the session, which is May fourth or whatever.
Twenty-six is okay with me, but-
Okay. Yeah, Mr. Kennedy?
I just want to make a suggestion. Um, we're, we spent about ten minutes looking at our calendars, but, um, Reverend Golden has, has raised, has raised a point. Uh, it's an interesting one, it's a dramatic fundamental change to the charter. Uh, I would just like to, and I think the members of the committee know where I'm coming from with this, because I've, I've been with the committee and, and, and we, uh, last meeting, me and the Chair had, had, um, a conversation about this briefly. Um, but I, I just want to get this out, as long as we're in the open and we can talk about it, and then the committee next week. If the committee going into their meeting next week knows what is on the mind of each board member, that might shape their conversation to, um, uh, push this even forward instead of waiting for us to make a meeting like a month from now. So, uh, if I may, real quick, uh, I really, I don't, I'm, I, I differ from Reverend Golden in that I don't believe that we need to go back to square one. I think we have a, we have a functioning committee, and, and by the, by the way, I'm talking about the Financial Oversight Committee, not the Audit Committee with these remarks. Um, I don't think we need to go back to square one. I do think we want to tinker a little bit, because obviously the membership is, is, uh, changing, and a couple people have dropped off, and, um, uh, at least one that I can think of doesn't want to come back, and one, one I believe has missed the attendance requirement that was in the charter. Um, and so, and I've, I, I have said it to committee members in their meetings before, is that my concern is that how do we, how do we most efficiently use the committee's time and, and their resources to focus on the, um, stewardship of the funds piece of the charter, which is in that first paragraph? Because my fear is, a- as always with any outside committee, my, my fear is demands on staff. And, um, there, I'll just, I'll just speak frankly, m- m- there have been times where I have, I have feared that, um, a, a member of the committee is looking for something to kind of beat us over the head with. Um, again, just my perception, I'm not saying that that's what's happening, it's just, it's just a feeling I get sometimes. Um, and so how can we, how can we set up, it's kind of like the conversation we're having with internal audit, what, what, could we hire a staff member who is a liaison between, um, the board and between ex- external audit? Could we perhaps think about, um, creating, um, I don't say creating a position, but just figuring out those channels of communication and, and focus the charter exactly on, um, what we want that committee to do? Because Chairman Christopher said to me last week, I, I brought up this point about, well, wait a minute, I think it was about the dashboard, it was about the academic indicator dashboard. And I raised the point, I said, wait a minute, like, but this doesn't really have anything to do with stewardship of funds, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, but, and, and, um, Chairman Christopher very wisely said to me, well, if that's all you want us to do, then you might as well close up the committee and just give that work to the Audit Committee, which I see where he's coming from, that was not my intention at all, but I, I see where that answer would come from, of course. So, um, that's kind of where I'm coming from, is how, the, the committee's been in operation for a year, over a year now, and now we've got a little experience under our belt, and how can we best, um, use their time and those resources and our staff resources as efficiently as possible?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you.
I'm available the twenty-sixth.
Okay, um, the-
That's what the question was, right?
Okay.
The twenty-sixth.
The twenty, how is, how does the twenty-sixth work?
I'm a, I'm a maybe, I don't know. Uh, it's Lisa's birthday weekend, so I, I might be out of town.
Okay.
We haven't bought any tickets anywhere yet, so.
The twenty-sixth, I think we're talking at least ninety minutes, maybe two hours, okay? Now, staff, what, what day of the week, okay?
I mentioned, I, I, you're, you're talking about the Friday before the budget is finalized in Tallahassee, and I cannot be here on the twenty-sixth.
Okay.
The Sinai Die is the third, anytime after May third, that doesn't seem to be a problem.
Okay, you can't, uh, be at a, a meeting, uh, before May third, is that, do I understand correctly?
Well, the other dates you had religious holidays that I observed, so I can't do that. So what I'm saying is, is after, after May third, assuming the legislative session ends on time, apparently based on the other dates that you threw out there, that's when the schedule, the calendar would open up, it won't interfere with an anniversary weekend of Mr. Kennedy's or whatever. I mean, that's, this is-
Okay, we're at, we're at May third, now, Michelle?
After May third.
Through any, the week of May sixth through May tenth.
Okay. The, uh, when, when is our first board meeting in May?
May fourteenth.
Okay, so we have a little, um, let, let's start with, um, May fourteenth. Okay, how about on May seventh? Do we have anything, uh, any, any, uh, anything scheduled on May seventh? Okay. Does anybody have any problem with May seventh? Okay. The, um, and if we were to set exclusively on, on May seventh for a 2:00 PM workshop about review of Audit Committee and Citizens Financial Oversight Committee charters that we had, um, originally set to have discussed at this meeting? That's, um, May seventh at two-
From two to four, can I ask that the board review the two charters and submit comments like we have in the past, that they submit them to me, um, the week prior, so that when you come to this meeting, you will have a working document of changes?
I, I think that's a good suggestion. What, uh, okay. Okay, uh, we got that, May seventh at 2:00 PM. And, uh, what is that, three weeks from, three weeks from today? Okay. All right, we've, we've got a time. Members of the audience, thank you for being here. Now, thank you for serving on committees, uh, thank you for the patience. We're going to, we're gonna have this on, you know, um, this item number three of the workshop is continued to May seventh at 2:00 PM. And if there's no further business allowed or going to go on and everybody wants to get out of here, this workshop is now adjourned. Uh, we will be resuming our activities at 5:45 for the regular meeting. You're gonna tell me you're not-
It's a marathon, right?
Are you gonna tell me you can't be here on the seventh?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, okay, we worked hard to get it there.